At six thirty one, I'll call the Wenham Select Board Meeting for August twenty third. And to a session, this is a virtual Zoom meeting. It is being recorded and will use roll call votes throughout. Select Board members in attendance are Gary Cheeseman.
I am Buka.
Peter Clay.
Thank you, and Catherine Tinsley as the Recording Secretary, Steve Pulishtown Administrator with us as well. Thank you. All right. Michelle, ready to go with the slides then? And the next one should bring us to public input. So if there's anyone in the audience like to speak for a couple of minutes on a subject not on tonight's agenda. But the hand up.
I see no hands.
All right. So very well, limited audience we know. So let's move right into announcements then over to Steve.
Yep, so this is. This has been a reoccurring announcement over the last several meetings. The water ban is still in effect and they are enforcing it with fines. Fines are subject to two hundred dollars for each offense. Per the Wenham Town Bylaws, I believe currently it still stands that only one fine. And thirty seven warnings have been issued this five, but folks seem to be complying. After the initial warning, which is nice. Next slide. Another ongoing theme is board, boards and committee openings. We still have a number of openings that. Are still open. So folks out there have any interest in getting involved with government, please reach out to us. We can help you. You know, give you a little more background to any of the. Boards and committees and openings and the time commitments that we put on. Rough estimates to how often each board and committee meets the Hamilton Wenham Cultural and Joint Recreation Committee. Do not meet that frequently. It's more as needed basis.
So I think for this one, Steve, I think we got Bill Wilson online here.
Yes, Steve. Yeah, good evening, everybody. Hear me, Gary?
Yes, so Bill Wilson from the Veterans Committee.
Yeah, representing the Veterans Committee, we're starting our fifth year on Rees Across America. Started in a very small way, only doing, collecting a small amount of money, doing two hundred and twenty Rees. To the last four years in a row where we've done over five hundred. And it's due and thanks to all the people of Wenham who have graciously donated fifteen dollars in more. In many instances to sponsor a REE. So once again, we're putting the drive on for the year. This is for December seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, high noon. Down at the Main Street Cemetery, we're going to be simultaneously working with other communities across the country. In a country with Arlington National Cemetery to lay the Rees at the same time here. So the way that we're collecting money this year soliciting inputs is that in your water bill. This year you'll find this REE, which gives you instructions on how to make a donation to Rees Across America. There are two main ways, which you're showing at the bottom there. One, make a check payable to the town of Wenham, but in the memo section, put Rees Across America. On the reference check and they'll put that into the proper account. And drop that off at Town Hall at the Finance Department. There's a little box there. Which Gary made out in two thousand and eighteen, our first year, a little white box. You can put the check in and I'll get down there and collect them and process them. The second one is going to the Rees Across America website, just showing down there. It's got, you just put that into your browser, MA zero one 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 is the Wenham account. And you can do an online thing. Either way, it gets to us there. So we're hoping for a good turnout this year. We've been kind of constrained by the number of people we could have on site. We would like to get two hundred plus there to help with the distribution of the Rees on top of the grays there. It's kind of a short ceremony and takes maybe an hour out of your day, but it's a great event for the kids, for the family. And for the veterans' families who are there representing their loved ones. So donate often. As much as you can, tell all your friends. Spread the word and we hope to see you. Any questions, you can reach out to Dean Peterson. He's a Veterans Committee Chair or myself to give you additional information. Or there's flyers downstairs at Town Hall, like this one shown here, where you can get all the information there. So that's all I have. Gary, back to you.
All right, thank you, Bill. Anything, questions, Peter or Diane? Back to Steve then.
And then I believe I'm gonna pass it off to Trudy.
Trudy, here we go for the election.
Yes, so leading up to our September sixth state primary, we are getting ready to start early voting. Our first day will be Saturday on August twenty seventh. You can see the schedule. That will, we will not have any early voting on Sunday, but then we go full into it on Monday through Friday. I've got copies of the schedule laying on the counter here in Town Hall. If anybody wants to pick one up. They're on the town's website. So if you have not already mailed in your vote by mail application. You've not mailed in your ballot. Anybody is welcome to vote in person. And we will be here during those hours.
Thank you. And of course, the big day, this is early voting, but the big day is the sixth, right? And the hours.
Oh, yes. That's another announcement.
Right.
And there's no application needed for this, this process. So where the vote by mail, if you want to receive your ballot by mail, there is an application, but just to. Vote in person, there's no application.
So early voting is just as you've always voted, come to Town Hall and come into the Select Board room, right?
It's all gonna start at the town clerk's office.
All right.
Then we'll direct them from there.
All right, sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Diane, Peter, anything? All right, thank you, Trudy. Town Administrator's update, then please, Steve.
All right, before I get into my standard updates, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize. The extra extraordinary weekend that the fire department had and thank all the firefighters for all their hard work. Let's give a brief recap, just so the folks at home can kind of see the crazy weekend they had. Largely due to the drought. They on Friday at twelve forty P M, the District Five Forestry Task Force was activated. And so Wenham deployed five firefighters to break heart reservation in Saugus. Where they worked until after eight P M, fighting the brush fire over there. The firefighters that responded were. Captain John Joyce, Lieutenant Anthony Nickus, Lieutenant Denzel Burke. Firefighter Erica Poitras and firefighter Ronnie Owens. And then again, on Monday at seven A M, the, the forestry task force was activated again where we sent. A number of firefighters back out to break heart reservation to assist, assist Saugus. We supplied. We supplied a utility truck. And with Squad Six Fire Truck with free firefighters, it's time to, to help out of the fire. Lieutenant Anthony Nickus, firefighter Stephen Koutrakis and firefighter Milton. Go, go true. And then if, you know, and on top of that, on Saturday, August twentieth. There was a very serious motorcycle accident down by Wenham Lake. Where the individual was severely injured and at some point I actually stopped breathing and Deputy Dan. Deputy Chief Dan Sullivan was able to initiate CPR. And after about ninety seconds of working on the patient, he regained pulse and respirations. The firefighter was transported to Beverly Hospital or later was flown by Med Flight to Boston Hospital. We do not have an update on this individual's status at this time. But the firefighters who responded to the incident and. And helped this individual were Chief Kavanaugh, Deputy Chief Baxter, Deputy Chief Sullivan. Lieutenant Mike Binns, Lieutenant Gary Blaney, Lieutenant Tom Curran, Lieutenant Sean McCarthy. Lieutenant Anthony Nickus, firefighter Jason Brayley, firefighter Robert Delaney. Firefighter Milton Gettray, Gettrue and firefighter Sean McCarron. So I just wanna, you know, thank, thank everybody for coming out and their hard work. And I know it wasn't the typical weekend, so thanks, everybody for that.
Diane or Peter?
That's, I went by that, that fire in Saugus twice and it was. And I did actually smell it the next day when I was going down one twenty-eight. Pretty amazing. And I did not realize. Steve, that. CPR had to be applied and successfully so, so that's pretty amazing.
I'd just like to thank all the firefighters for being able to help with the, in the region. That's great. That's great. Crazy stuff going on.
Yes, but it shows the great cooperation we have between towns. So someday perhaps we'll need the assistance as well. But well done to the firefighters. All right. Steve, right now.
So moving on with the rest, moving on with the rest of my, my updates. So we, most are aware that we entered a shared service agreement with the town of Hamilton for assessing services. We, we were extended and the offer was accepted this morning for a new shared assessor. Technically a Hamilton employee, but fifty percent of their time will be dedicated to the Wenham. Per the shared service agreement, so that that's exciting news. He comes from the town of Amesbury, where he's currently the principal assessor up there. And also in the assessing department, we're able to extend an offer and the offer was accepted for the executive. Assistant to the Board of Assessors, which is the full-time position that will be. A Wenham employee and will help support the board and the chief assessor. Additionally, the, we received a formal letter from Gordon College notifying us of. The prospective sale to Polty Homes. And basically outlined the details that have been circulated already through email. It's a age-restricted development. It's over the sale is proposed at. Believe seventy-seven acres with a proposed three hundred and seventy-seven. Individually owned condominiums ranging from one, two and three bedrooms. And essentially I'm bringing this up in this update so that I can submit the letter to formally to public record. And we have also posted for the Assistant Town Administrator role. That is the position that the board. Reviewed the job description of and adopted the description at the last meeting. The job has been posted on MMA now for about a week. And it closes next Wednesday, so it'll be up there for two weeks. We already have several applications, so we're, we're hopeful that we're gonna get a great candidate on that. And then the final update is just opera requests. Michelle and I will be sending out a sheet tomorrow that lists all the current. Departmental requests. And we're asking the board to review, respond with any questions, the clarification that they need. Because we're gonna be asking for, on the board, Select Board Meeting on September twelfth, for each Select Board Member. To have kind of whittled away the list of projects and compiled their list for top twelve projects. As we work to come up with kind of a master list of top priorities so that we can put together a, a public survey. For some civic engagement to get some feedback from the residents and boards and committees. Likely through Survey Monkey or something similar, where we can push it out on social media through the various boards and committees. And get some public input as to where their priorities lie. And that is all I have. This evening, probably updates.
Questions, Diane?
Steve, what, what meeting were we gonna discuss, ARPA? You said September twelfth?
Seventh, seventh.
Seven for the top twelve, I may have.
Okay. I was confused.
I meant to say, I meant to say September seventh for the top twelve.
Is it, yeah, I got confused on that. Okay. Perfect. And can we get the names of our new employees or is it still?
You know, I don't wanna share just yet the first date of hire.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I can share it, so I'm just gonna keep it silent, but I'll make, I'll make the. Formal introductions to the board when they start with the names and everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So Chair's report focuses on two things. As you see in the paper and as Steve spoke about, a major development over at Gordon College. So the town on its part will have quite a bit of work to do. And of course, Planning Board will be foremost on that, but this is probably a, up for a year of. Planning and reviews and then understand it's probably a three-phase multi-year construction project. So this can be a long thing, but certainly the largest development ever in Wenham. The second one is, we'll get a little more further on, but the. State notified us today that they're planning for the public hearing on the Route One A project. To be on the eighth. And Steve, did you get the time on that?
It was six thirty.
All right, six thirty.
On the last slide, we'll go through.
Okay, so we got two important opportunities for the public to get involved in these two big projects. So the Gordon College, what Polty will be putting on presentations. At, on the seventh of September at eight A M, that information will be coming up. And then the Route One A Public Hearing, so this is your really a big chance to weigh in on this. And that'll be on the eighth and we'll get the time there later. So over Diane first, anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Peter?
I've got nothing.
All right. On, where do we go then? Peter, the clerk of the Select Board, your minutes motion.
For, just before we, we start, six twenty-one of twenty-two minutes. Have some further edits that need to take place and are not ready, so we're going to move them to the next meeting. The other priority.
Okay, so I move to approve the Wenham Select Board Meetings of June twenty-eighth. Twenty twenty-two, July fifth, twenty twenty-two and August ninth of twenty twenty-two.
I second and have some comments.
All right, Diane, go ahead.
So. On the meeting minutes of August ninth. A couple of little small typos, I noticed the top of the page shows that it's August eighth, I believe. Or it's August, no, maybe I'm wrong. Is it August ninth? No, that's not it. So on page five. Of those minutes. There were, there's just a couple of things that I wanted to correct. One is that I said, where Ms. Buko opined, we're talking about the C P C minutes on page five. This article limits the terms of at-large members, but not members that represent town boards slash committees. And I opine that this, I should, it should say may not be equal representation on the committee, not, is not. So there's just some small typos.
Right.
Knows edits are reflective in the packet for the board to review.
They're not, they're not there.
No.
In the packet, no.
Okay.
No.
No, they are there.
They are there?
They are. Four twenty-nine P M this afternoon packet.
Yeah, that's the one I was looking at. So they are in there?
Yep.
Okay, so did you guys notice that? And you're okay with that? That's, I guess that was my question. I'm confused now where I am.
Can we, can we go to that page, please?
Oh, yeah, no, I know what it is. The August ninth meeting says it's August eighth. That's what the, at the top of the thing and then on page five.
That is page. Sixteen on the slideshow. Indeed, at the top it says August eighth.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna pull up the packet, just to make sure everyone's on the same page if we have to make any additional edits.
Yeah, cuz I don't see him on my, in my packet that I got this afternoon. Unless I pulled up the wrong packet.
There were three of them.
That was my fault.
So someone's speaking in the background, so please check your mute.
Are you seeing the minutes on the screen now? Because I'm showing, is this showing?
No.
No, just the menu. There we go.
So the meeting, the meeting was on August ninth, right?
Right up in the title line.
Yeah, yeah, so that should be changed. And then on page five. That's page five. So I don't see the change.
What paragraph are you talking?
The one that starts with Ms. Buko opined this article limits the terms of members, but not the members that represent the boards and committees. And opine this is not equal representation on the committee. And by allowing members to serve many years and others only a certain time. So I think that it, and then it has a little bit of a, I don't know what the slash is, different precedent for one group, et cetera, et cetera. I think I'd like it to say that. Opine that this may not be equal representation on the. On the committees. But, and get rid of that and, by allowing some members to serve many years and others only a certain time and cross out the rest of that sentence.
You good with that, Peter?
I'm fine with that. Did you catch that, Catherine?
Thank you. I have Diane's edits directly.
All right.
Oh.
And then in the Article Five. Mr. Pullos explained the potential warrant article by, instead of reviewing, should say explaining. That because the town clerk is an elected official. Blah, 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 blah. So reviewing doesn't really make sense.
So change reviewing to explaining?
Yes.
Yes, all right.
And then in Trudy Reed's sentence, was present and spoke to her, request the Select Board. Place an article on the S T M warrant to increase the town clerk's salary. You don't need the and, due to mandated changes and increased workloads. Right?
Scratch the end then. Good with that?
Sorry, yep. Those were my little, and then I think your sentence, Gary. Further down there, Mr. Cheeseman noted the timeline was tight and must include a review. It's really small, by town council. He voiced his concern. The board was responding to market forces, and this is my question now. Hired people according to the classification study recommended salary range. I, I don't know, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I think it should say, wait for the classification study.
Okay. Those are, those are my little things that made me go, hmm, earlier.
So we can make those edits and.
And I'll say rats.
Meeting, so the nice clean version for the board to review.
All right.
What'd you say, Pete?
I said rats.
Rats, I'm sorry. But I think we could probably approve them as, as discussed today.
That's what you wish, for sure.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Your motion then, as amended, Peter? You muted. You're muted, Peter.
Can we go back to the motion, please? I move to approve the Wenham Select Board Meeting Minutes as amended today. August ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Further discussion, then roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Can we just check with Catherine? Is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, new business appointments, Diane, your motions.
I'm, oh, this is wonderful. I moved to appoint Chris W. Petro and Adele S. Is it Raii Day, as election officers for a term beginning August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
Peter's seconds.
Questions, comments? No? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. And thank you for stepping up for this job, new election officers.
And I moved to appoint, reappoint Christine M. Burns to the Board of Election Registars for a term beginning August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Peter's seconds.
Anything else? Otherwise roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Thank you, Christine. So this evening, we may, we're need to realign our additional duties. So. We have two, the Master Plan Advisory Committee and the Veterans Committee. Both places for a selectman representative on there. So Peter, I think last meeting you spoke to desiring the Veterans Committee.
I did.
All right. And. I can take the master planning advisory as you're already on the other half with the planning board. Is that all right?
That's perfect.
Right, so.
I'd like to thank you both for stepping up, taking on a little extra work. I do appreciate it. So I move that the Wenham Select Board temporarily appoint Gary Cheeseman to the Master Plan Advisory Committee effective August twenty-third. Until January first, twenty twenty-three.
Clay's seconds.
Anything else? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
And I move to, move that the Wenham Select Board temporarily appoint Peter Clay to the Veterans Committee effective August twenty-third until January first, twenty twenty-three.
Anything else? Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Thank you.
On to C. All right, so we have the special town meeting coming up. And tonight we're working again through the warrant articles. And so let's take these one at a time and then the votes to place them on there. So I think perhaps Diane, if you would read the draft motion first. So that we know exactly which one we're speaking to and then we'll open it up for discussion amongst the three of us.
Great. So I move that the Wenham Select Board adopt the following language to see if the town will vote to authorize the use of. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars borrowing approved under Article Seven of the July. Eleventh, twenty twenty annual town meeting to be used by the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District. For a school district facilities study for the specific purpose of paying the cost of a feasibility study for the Cutler Elementary School. Two thirty-seven Asbury Street, Southampton, Mass, oh, one nine eight two. For which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Set amount to be expended at the direction of the district's Cutler School Building Committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. In any study costs, the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA. Shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for this study shall be set. For this study shall be set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. Or take any other action relative thereto. As an article on the warrant. For the twenty-twenty-two October first special town meeting.
Alright, so, uh, the history on this, uh, Superintendent Eric Tracy has been with us on the select board. Explain this. And this first one is a, uh. Correction to the wording requested by the MSBA. And Steve confirmed that, uh, KP Law, our town council, has reviewed this. So this is the first. Article is to. Redesignate the two hundred fifty thousand earlier appropriated in twenty-twenty.
So this money was already put aside and it's still just waiting.
Yes, yeah, so the, uh, so the MSBA, my understanding is wanted to have this different language involved in this article. And, uh, here is the result. Questions, Diane? Peter, are any comments, Steve?
We do need a second.
Oh, which, um, second.
So any, uh, further questions or comments on this one? If not, uh. Then roll call vote to place this first article on the, uh, warrant. Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Okay, second motion. I move that the Wyndham Select Board adopt the following language to see if the town will vote to authorize the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School District. To establish a stabilization fund for the district pursuant to section sixteen G and a half. Of chapter forty-one of the Massachusetts General Laws or take any other action relative thereto. As an article on the warrant for the twenty-twenty-two October first special town meeting.
Peter's seconds.
Thank you. And just to clarify, that was chapter seventy-one, right? Alright.
Oops, sorry.
No, no, no. So, um. S- Steve, can you, uh, just explain for the public that this fund, uh, just puts a, um. A parking spot for the money for this purpose? Is that a good way to put it?
Or is muted? Uh, yeah, so it's basically, it's a stabilization fund as the, the name implies, and it's a way to, right? Retain funds across fiscal years and use them when needed, uh, for, for the dedicated purpose. So. This will, you know, as, as the money's coming in and out through borrowing and, uh, various needs that, you know, it becomes, it's more of an accounting. Tool, uh, than a financial impact to the town.
Very well. So any further questions on this one, Peter or Diane?
Nope.
Alright. So we, uh, had the, uh, motion and the second roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Oh, boy.
Take a deep breath and.
Yeah. Try not to make any mistakes on this one. I move that the Wyndham Select Board adopt the following language. To see if the town will approve the, is that one million?
Yes.
One million dollar borrowing authorized by the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School District. For a feasibility study for the Cutler Elementary School located at two thirty-seven Asbury Street, South Hamilton, Mass. Zero one nine eight-two. Including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Set amount to be expended at the direction of the district's Cutler School Building Committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any study costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA. Shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. Provided, however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon. An affirmative vote of the town at an election to exempt from the limitations on taxes imposed by the general law fifty-nine. Section twenty-one C or so-called proposition two and a half. The town's. Alec.
Allegable.
Allegable, thank you. Share of the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal. On said borrowing or take any other action that relative thereto. To the special town meeting October first, twenty-twenty-two. As a warrant article.
Second.
Second. So, uh, just, uh, Steve, as we clarify here for the public, the one million is the total.
Kill some mice.
Well, someone please mute.
No idea.
She said she saw one.
Alright. So the one million is the total for the two towns and will be split as normally based upon.
That one.
Population. Right, Steve?
And when.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
So, uh, I don't know who diagnostics iPhone is. But, um, we would really appreciate it if you would mute your phone.
Alright. So, um. Anything else on this one?
Yeah, so just, yeah, well, just to add that the one million dollars, the total borrowing authorized by the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School District. The portion, this would be a proposition two and a half debt exclusion. So it would be, uh, in addition to, uh, the two and a half. Percent increase on your prior levy capacity. And, um. It would follow only the debt service of about three hundred. And forty-eight thousand dollars, which is, uh, about one-third of the, um. The cost of, of the debt. And, um, the rest would be picked up by the town of Hamilton.
Alright then. Anything else? Roll call vote then, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
So I move the Wyndham Select Board adopt the following language to see if the town will vote pursuant to general law, chapter forty-one, section one oh eight, to increase the salary of the elected town clerk. From seventy thousand eight hundred and ninety-five. Dollars to seventy-seven. Thousand eight hundred eighty-one. Point five. And as funding therefore to transfer the free cash. From free cash, the sum of. Six thousand four hundred and seventy-eight and seventy-seven cents or take any other action relative. There to as an article on the warrant for the twenty-twenty-two October first special town meeting.
A second?
Uh, Clay's seconds.
Right. So.
Yeah.
And just for some background, this represents a, uh. A ten percent, um. Uh, pay adjustment and would be effective back to, uh. August first. Of, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Peter, um, and I worked together and this was. The proposal he wanted to bring forward for the board to discuss, uh, as was, um, noted in, in the prior meeting.
Comments, questions, Diane?
I do. Um. I am. I have the same feelings with this article as I did at the last meeting. I don't think it's the right time to bring this, to bring this up. I feel it's, um. It's a financial article that really should go through the budget process and be vetted by. The FinCom and the Board of Selectmen in relation to all the other money articles that we have. So. With all that said, I have to. State and emphasize that I understand that. Small-town municipal employees. Work much harder than their salary would ask. And that especially, um, the town clerk's office that I know fairly well. The job, the responsibilities, the duties have, have increased exponentially over the past few years. But I just don't think that this is the time to bring it to the townspeople. I feel that there's a time and a place to review financial articles. And I think. It would be, um. A poor precedence. To go forward with this at this time. And I think. Poor precedence. And the other one, I didn't think it would be fiscally responsible. Um, for us to do this.
So I'll just comment.
Go ahead, Peter.
Um, Steve and I sat down and looked at this. What's, what's really happened, um. With the, all the extra. Duties that the town clerk has to do around an election. And I thought Trudy provided a pretty. Good, um, document that's like going from like. Three days to seventy-seven days, right? So there's, there's a, uh. Scope of work increase that absolutely happened. And we looked at her, you know. Pay. Relative to everybody else. And I think our point of view was we need to, to address the, the scope change right now. And then later. After we get the salary comparison study, then adjust. If needed. Um, in the spring meeting.
Um, Gary, you wanna?
So I expressed the concern that, yeah, this is a, uh. One-off request that, uh, comes direct as, uh. Previously stated without, uh, review by the FinCom. And, um, uh. Although the comparisons would, uh. Justify it. The, uh, jump to ten percent, I think is some concern, especially as we don't have the, uh, classification, uh, uh, results yet. So, um. I'm of mind that, uh. You know, the, uh. This talking about this as a position. Certainly needs to be, uh, adjusted. But I, uh, do not think that, you know, we're doing a real shortcut here. On, uh, this position to, uh, change it when we got so many others as well that are either in, uh, contract negotiations or. You know, in the same, uh, category of becoming much more competitive salary needs. And we just saw that on the hiring of the assessor as well. So, um. Let me go back to Peter then and, uh. See if you have further comments.
So I just go back and, um. I. Totally. Agree that we need to, we. Into spring. We need to adjust not just Trudy's. But anyone else's who seems out of line with, uh, comparison to other towns. But what we're doing here is she had a scope of work change. She absolutely did. Because of the way she has to handle elections now. I can understand, um. Trying to get FinCom's input. I, I, I think that's a very fair point.
So, uh, FinCom will have. A, uh, opportunity at their next meeting to establish their point of view on this. And as at all articles dealing with the finances would, uh, make their recommendation. Prior to town meeting. Further discussion?
So a scope may have changed, um. But it's not something that cannot be dealt with at the proper time. I feel, um, again, that it should wait until the annual town meeting and be discussed that way.
Well, I. Think I'm gonna be outvoted two to one, so, uh. So, uh, why don't we just? Uh, let's go get FinCom's. Point of view. And then we can probably come, come back and haggle about what, what's the right time to do it.
So, um. Warrant closes tonight, we're proposing. Steve, any word on when FinCom is meeting?
We're meeting to go over the, the, uh, financially impacted warrant articles, uh, on Friday at ten AM.
So. I think it's up to us to decide whether to put that wa- warrant article.
Yes.
For the, the, onto the warrant now, um.
Yeah.
And I think if in, in. In the spring, it would have already been discussed by the FinCom and, and that would have already been recommended again. I, it's just, it seems rushed. It doesn't seem to be the proper time and. I just think it's a bad precedence and bad procedure.
I think that, um. Given the recent town history that, uh, you know, we've been working. Diligently to put, uh, processes and procedures in place and policies. So I'd like to, uh. Adhere to the established routine of, uh. Full vetting by the FinCom and then, um, to a spring town meeting.
Alright, guys.
Alright, so let's go with a vote then. Peter?
No.
And. Alright, Diane?
Um, I say no as well.
Alright. Gary, no. So Peter, did you, uh, vote the way you intended with that? No?
Well, I think, I think what you. Um.
I'm just checking that. Changes what you had previously said.
Yeah, because you're telling me that. That there's a proper process to follow and we should do that.
Yes.
And, um. And you convinced me.
Alright, very well. Alright.
So. Um, the next one, I move that the Wyndham Select Board adopt the following language to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws. Section five dash thirty-four Community Preservation Committee. By inserting the bold italic language and deleting the strike-through language as follows. Bold it. I'll just read this, yeah. Members of the multi-member bo- bodies shall be designated by. Members of multi-member bodies shall be designated by such body for a three-year term or such shorter term. For which the member serves on such multiple member board. And in the case of at-large members appointed by the select board for three-year terms. At any at-large member appointed for a two-fold. Three-year term shall be ineligible for reappointment until after the next succeeding annual town meeting. Any vacancy on the Community Preservation Committee shall be filed. Filled for the unexpected term by the entirety. Entity responsible for the original appointment. As an article on the warrant for the twenty-twenty special town meeting October first. Sorry for my reading.
Clay's seconds.
Alright. Uh, I'll go first on the session on this one. So this is merely a, uh, attempt to clarify the language. That, uh, on the CPC. The practice has always been that the select board, of course, appoints the. At-large committee members. And then there are multiple other members that come from particular. Boards or committees themselves. The language here was thought to be confusing in that. Where it says members serving on such multi-member body and in the case of at-large members appointed by the select board for three-year terms. So clearly the, uh, select board appoints for three-year terms. And the next thing says that if you've. Served two full-year terms, you're ineligible to after the next, uh, reappointment. It has been the practice on the CPC that. Members from other. Bodies haven't been appointed. Have not been subject to that three-year restriction or the two times three-year restriction. Because they are with org- reorganization, they're always appointed for one year or so. So the first sentence where it says members of multi-member bodies shall be designated by such body for a three-year or shorter term for which the member serves. So there's some confusion there as to whether the members from an other. Board are term limited or not. And this was merely an attempt to clarify that, as is the practice in the past. That members from the other boards have not been term limited because they serve one year at a time. Being redesignated by their. Own boards, whereas the. Members appointed by the select board for the three-year term. Two of those and you're become ineligible. So this, uh, article is gone by KP Law. It does not affect anybody. Serving as an at-large. You know, the same. Terms. Two full terms and you're good. And it just clarifies that those members coming from multi-member boards. Such as I think it's Joint Rec Representative is not limited. So, uh, over to Diane and Peter for comments.
So being the negative Nancy tonight, um. I don't agree with this as well either. I mentioned. That I don't think. For a few reasons, I don't think this should go on the special town meeting warrant. And one reason is because this has not even been discussed with the current CPC. So that upsets me. Secondly, I don't think that they should be two separate. Term situations for the. term situations for the board. I understand that there are community, there are representatives from different boards and there's at-large members. But it seems to me that they should all be either term limited or not term limited. Because that seems to be the equal way to go. I particularly like term limited, but that's for the CPC in my mind to discuss, but I don't like this warrant article right now.
Peter?
I'm fine with it.
So Diane, you know, the, uh, this seems to have grown in controversy with emails and so forth, but, uh, just wanted to point out that the wording that we're proposing here reflects the reality of how the CPC has been run over the years since it was created and was, uh, vetted back with the, uh, moderator at that time that that was the intent. So not hard over on this, so, um,
So I, I understand what you're saying.
So, so what we really need to decide then is, you know, should we make this, you know, the term limits apply to everybody and perhaps extend that to other boards in the committees to make it a general town rule or not? Because, you know, really it's very difficult to go back, what, twenty years or so and understand the intent of why they, uh, split it into some term limited and some others not, so at that time. So Peter, what do you think?
Well, one thing is I don't think we should, um, just blanket have term limits for, for all of our positions. Cause we're, we're, we're gonna run out of people.
Yes.
We're gonna run out of people.
Right. So, um, the effect, so if we, uh, pass on this article as well, it really has no practical effect on the committee as it stands now because the, uh, individual boards and committees have already appointed their representatives. And the, uh, select board has appointed its four at-large representatives. So we probably have some time on this as well.
I agree, and I, I would feel better if the, the committee itself discussed it. They might come back with the same thing, they may not, but I do think that it, I understand the intent was just to make it what it was supposed to be. Two thousand sixteen, I don't think it was four years ago, six years, whatever it was. But I think it should be updated with the current members.
Right.
And brought back.
Would have to expand that too, because, you know, the CPC really doesn't create its own, uh, you know, bylaw, so we'd, we'd have to involve the committees from where the representatives arrive from as well, I think.
Well, it's a, it's a CPC committee. There is a CPC committee and this affects that committee, so I don't think
Well, that's, that's, that's the thing is, it doesn't affect the committee, it just keeps things as it is and just clarifies the wording, but I'll defer on this, so. Let's, uh, we've had the motion, we had it seconded. And, um, anybody else? Comments before we vote?
Yeah.
All right, Peter?
Uh, yes.
Diane?
No.
And, uh, Gary will say yes. So we'll put it out there. All right. All right, on to, uh, better news then. Uh, Rich Suze is with us tonight to, uh, look, give us a briefing on the DPW paving plan.
So thank you very much. Uh, I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Um, let me just give this a shot. And? Do you see, uh, you know, someone looks, looks like an agenda here?
Yeah, yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, yeah, this is, this is a bit of an update on current activities that we have going on now and, um, you know, where a few, uh, other opportunities, you know, projects that are coming up. Um, so currently we are underway with, uh, milling paving. And I'm also including, uh, some sidewalk and ADA ramp installations, um. The paving and milling is at Patty Lane, Fisk Street and Lake Ave. Um, as well as Virginia Place and Dambrojo Way and School Street. Uh, we took the opportunity to, um, install and construct new, uh, crosswalk ramps at seven crosswalks, which totals fourteen, um, ADA ramps. So, um, we are complete with, um, Patty, Fisk and Lake and School. Uh, Dambrojo Way, I believe, was, uh, completed late, uh, this afternoon. And we still have Virginia Place, which is scheduled for, uh, tomorrow afternoon. So I'm hoping by, you know, the end of the week, uh, the latest, uh, you know, that, um, that group of roads will be, will be complete and that will be basically the, the DPW summer, um, paving projects. And I, you know, we'll, we'll regroup in the fall. Um, I'm sorry, regroup in the spring to, you know, put together a new list and, um, you know, begin, begin the next set. So that being said, I wanted to show, um, a, a pavement management, uh, report, basically the program we, we got, we hired beta engineering, um, back in the early spring and in April, they did their, um, their, their site visits and their data collection. So I, I will, um, I'm gonna show basically the pavement management report and a couple other, um, it, it tables in the report that I, I pull out and use to, to determine which streets, um, you know, probably make, make the most sense, you know, feasibly and also, um, you know, the usage and, I don't know, where would make sense to apply funds. Um, before I get to that, I just wanted to give very brief updates on, uh, the next three bullets here where, um, a group, uh, residents came together, um, about a year ago, uh, with concerns on Auburn, Edel, the crosswalk, uh, at, at the corner of, um, Edel. And a, um, a blinking sign was determined that that's what, uh, was best necessary, uh, to mitigate some, um, issues as far as children, you know, commuting and walking to school. So good news there is, um, I actually purchased the blinking lights in FY twenty-two. And, uh, tomorrow, I, I wait, I was waiting for the ramp, uh, work to be finished. And tomorrow, uh, contractor is gonna go and install, uh, those, those blinking lights at the crosswalk. So again, um, you know, with end of this week in mind, I'm hoping, you know, any bugs are worked out after we install tomorrow. And, um, I am hopeful that it'll be up and running for the weekend. So I wanted to make sure, um, School Street project with the ramps and, uh, this crosswalk was done prior to school, uh, beginning. So
So So Rich, it's blinking both ways, right?
Correct. Yep. So either side you're on, it'll be activated and both will blink on, you know, both sides of the roads.
This particular spot has been identified for, uh, too many speeders and so forth, and, uh, Chief Denapley and Police Department have been working hard to, uh, keep a speed under control there. But, uh, yes, as you said, uh, this was looked at a year ago. So Rich, so basically, uh, we have, uh, in place the ADA ramps and this new crosswalk that will, uh, take the kids from Arbor Street onto School Street into the, into the, uh, school itself. And the other ramps are over on Perkins Street, is that correct?
Yep, correct. It's, um, school and, and yes, Perkins is where, uh, those all lie.
Right.
I, I do have, I do have some good before and after photos I'm gonna show as well.
And the plan is to expand outward from the, uh, school as funding gets available in the years?
Yeah, so I, I think what makes the most sense and, um, you know, it, obviously your, your opinions count where we're pretty close, um, you know, the heading towards, uh, the library. Then you have, um, you have Bruce and, uh, it's escaping me right now, the street the library's on. There's, uh, thank you, Porter. There's, um, some opportunity there for new, new ramps as well and, um, you know, possibly some additional sidewalk replacements. Uh, we did so, uh, we replaced five hundred feet of sidewalk on School Street. So, uh, it was in pretty rough shape and, um, it was definitely necessary to, to accomplish that, so, um. I think as always, when we, when I do this type of work, the, the sidewalks that were more of the second tier that, you know, weren't, uh, as bad as ones I replaced now look like the really bad ones, so. I'll, um, I'm gonna focus on, you know, doing some of, of additional work on School Street in the future as well for sidewalks. Uh, quick update, uh, I'm sure people have noticed on Walnut Street, National Grid is laying, uh, gas main. They are getting pretty close, uh, speaking with the project manager. Their goal was to be done in October. Um, I, I think that'll definitely be achievable, so once, um, once that project is complete, I will work with them as far as any additional road restoration, oh, that we should, you know, consider. Based on, you know, the, the trench that the, the new pipe is laying in. Um, at this point in the year, my recommendation would be to probably let that trench settle over winter. And then come spring, address any, any issues that, um, you know, may arise during the winter or, you know, even before that, so. Um, I'll work with National Grid to, to figure out the best approach there. Then the next bullet, a- and anybody feel free to jump in with questions. Um, the, the next bullet is basically I have, um, request for quotes out for townwide, uh, line striping. And that's actually due this, um, quotes are due four o'clock on this Thursday. So, um, I'll get moving on that once, once we identify the lowest bidder and, um, move forward with that. Uh, so back up to, you know, just kind of discussing some of the, uh, before and after photos, I wanted to show. Um, so this is school in Perkins. Can everybody, everybody still sees this, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So this crosswalk, um, was one of, not one that we replaced. And, you know, just to sort of point out, it might be a little hard to see within this PDF, but, um, each, each, uh, corner was, um, old concrete, uh, curbing that was, was all, you know, it was all broken up. And again, there was, it was not a smooth surface to, to walk, you know, from one side of the street to the other. Um, so this was definitely in need of repair. So actually they finished up school today, so I went, ran out there. And that's what it currently looks like right now. Um, so definitely, you know, much, um, you're better, you know, easier to, to traverse and, uh, you know, more smoother transition from sidewalk to across the street and, and, um, to the next, next side. Uh, as I discussed, so this is basically right on the side of Buca School, pretty much across from the park. Again, this was a very large root that had grown from the tree, uh, to the left here. Uh, I put that can of spray paint there for, uh, basically scale where this, um, upheaval was, uh, about five to six inches. So, you know, it's very, um, very hard to navigate, if, you know, if you're, you're in a, a wheelchair or just, you know, even, you know, these are elementary school kids just walking. Um, so I met with, with Win, we discussed that we're gonna have to, you know, do some work on this, um, on the root system here. And he agreed, so, uh, today, that's what the, um, that sidewalk looks like now. So, you know, a, a major improvement of this sidewalk right here. I think I have one more here. So this is, um, basically exiting the doorway on, on the side of the building here. And if you're gonna, you know, cross this crosswalk and obviously go to the basketball court and the park. Um, as you can see, you know, this, this area was, um, you know, very rough shape. The, uh, opposite side was grass. There, you know, there wasn't even a sidewalk or anything that you're basically landing on when you cross the road. So, uh, I thought it was necessary to replace this one and this is what it is today. So, um, again, major, major improvement. There was a right to the right of this picture, pretty much where that fence post was. There was a very, very large stump. Uh, took the opportunity, you know, during the, all the work going on that we had Iron Tree come in and we actually removed, um, three very large stumps on the property. So, um, definitely, you know, necessary improvements and, and just, um, not just aesthetically, but, you know, very functionally as well. Um, just gonna go back up to my and talk here. So that leads me to jump into basically what, you know, the, the, the payment manager report that I, you know, brought up. Um, I wanted to very quickly, I'm gonna probably fly through the draft report fast. I want everybody to see what, you know, the deliverable was. But there's, um, a, a table that I wanted to kind of call out because what it does is this report provides what they call an RSR, a road surface rating. And, you know, it's a guide to understanding, you know, what roads are, are in the rough, you know, roughest shape. Um, and then, you know, that's what taken with a grain of salt in the sense where, um, you know, what roads are maybe the most traveled. You might have a road, um, you know, in a neighborhood off to the side that, you know, is in very, very rough shape, but, um, you, you may decide not to do it or to do it, you know, for whatever reason, so it, it's, it's, you, you take this data and you use, you know, best, um, best practices to figure out which, where you should go. Um, I was, so again, I don't wanna go into this, uh, too, too deeply, but, um, you know, very good, uh, information. I will give this to Steve. Uh, I, I basically just need beta to take off the draft that's on the, uh, cover. Uh, because this is a final at this point. But, um, a, a lot of, of good information, uh, one thing I wanted to point out is so that, that RSR rating I was talking about when, um, comes in at a seventy-eight and a half, which is a very, I was very encouraged when I, when I saw that. Um, basically, industry standards, you know, if you're, if you're at seventy, you know, you're you're pretty average or even a little bit above average, you know, some towns obviously are able to apply more funds and they may be into the eighties and nineties. And, you know, other towns that, uh, you know, have, uh, obviously larger network systems, um, you know, you can see fifties and, you know, sometimes forties, so baseline, we're, we're in pretty good shape. Um, and that's, I, I will, um, the next table I show, I'll kind of give you the, the reasoning for the roads that I hit because I, I, I hit some of the lower ranking roads to, um, I guess not just increase the RSR, but also we didn't have many that were in very rough shape that we, you know, that I thought hadn't, you know, required immediate attention. Um, again, this is a very long report, so I won't go very, very deep, but it gives you recommendations as far as the types of, uh, repairs and construction that, you know, they, that's recommended for, you know, your road system. So, you know, just in a quick glance, this one, this table's a good table in a sense where it's showing you, you know, what car, uh, or what piece of the town, you know, you, that, uh, from lane miles are major rehabilitation, you know, down to no maintenance required, so. Um, again, you know, pretty, pretty favorable in the sense of the major and, you know, in the minor, the preventative maintenance is, is, um, that's the largest group and that's where you, you, you really wanna be in the sense where you're you could be more proactive and less reactive on, on roadway repairs.
A quick question, Rich.
Yeah.
On the estimated cost, is that to, uh, bring whatever category up to the no maintenance required line? Or, uh, is preventative maintenance, uh, something that you just do a little bit each year and keep it in the same category?
So the, for this table, estimated costs basically says if I went out and, and just did routine maintenance on every road that, uh, that was eight point three five miles, it would cost ninety-two thousand. Then, you know, basically as time goes on, your preventative maintenance would begin to creep down into the routine maintenance. So those, you know, our preventative maintenance lane or miles would probably drop and then you'd see more mileage into the routine maintenance. So, yeah, it's, it's basically, yeah, it's, it's a dollar amount estimated if you were to do just that. You know, that, I guess, that method across the whole town.
All right, thanks.
Yep. So this was something I wanted to, to show, and this is just basically the list of roads, you know, from, from worst to first. So the, I think it's the fifth or sixth column over, the comp R is So the, I think it's the fifth or sixth column over, the comp RSR. Um, you know, that basically shows. Where, you know, your, your major and minor rehabilitation needs to occur. That being said, I want to point out that, that what we are, uh, working on now. You know, number three is the Ambrosio, number four is Virginia. It's like number six is Fisk. Seven or eight is Patty Lane. And then. Back to the, the human element where, you know, you have to. You know, make decisions not just based on the RSR. Uh, Lake Ave is, is actually the last one on, on this page, it's only two pager. But obviously Patty, Fisk and Lake are all in the same neighborhood, so it, it would. You know, behoove you to do that, that road as well while you're out there. So, um. What happens is annually. I, I sit down with Beta. And discuss the roads that we did, what type of, um, you know, method was used, and then they. You know, I guess lack of a better term, they recompute. You know, our RSR factor, all these, um, you know, the, the roads I just did will fall down into, you know, preventative maintenance or, no, probably no maintenance required. And, um. And, and that's a, you get, you know, basically. An update every year of this report, you don't have to go through the motions of the. You know, full data collection, but you're just basically. Updating each year as you go.
Thank you, Rich.
Yep, and, and it's one more really neat tool, just, oh, sorry.
Oh.
Nope, so, so one really neat tool with this is we are given, it's like this. You're able to see this now? Is this, you see Manage My Roads?
No.
No.
It's a dashboard, let me see if I can. If I can pop it up on this one, I have a dual screen going, so it's. It almost wants to default. Still, still nothing?
Sometimes this shit, Rich, sometimes this share is tied to the document, so if you want to just try un, unsharing your screen and then resharing.
Yeah, right.
Trying to share.
Sounds good. So. Oh, actually, there's a, there's a new share, I think it's right here, hold on.
There you go.
Okay. So this is what they call, so you, you see it more or less a website, Manage My Roads. Is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay, um, so. What this is, is, you know, a visual of, you know, your roads. Uh, I'm still learning this because this was, um, I've used Beta in the past, but this is a new. I guess, you know, tool that they, they offer. So I'm still learning it, but there's a, a lot of. Neat information and, um. You know, it's, it provides a visual, and one of the things I wanted to show is as I zoom in here, so I'm zooming in on Topsail Road. Part of. Part of the data collection is these white dots are. Photos. So what it does is. It will, so this is just one photo. This is the, the roadway. Taken in, it was, uh, April or May, um, this year, so, you know, we have a pretty up to date, let me see, some of them. Some will show you a. A little bit of information on it. But again, it's a very handy tool where, um, if I need to, you know, take a look at. A roadway, I'm at my desk, I can go through this, take a look and, um. Getting better understanding of, you know, what this road looked like at time, um, and, you know, that point in time. And that's. For every road that they, they went on, um, that they traveled. The, um, the other piece, I'm still waiting for a data layer, is a sign data layer. Uh, it takes more time to extrapolate the, those images, so what it will do is, um, I expect it will be. Either another. Dot on the map that I could, you know, turn that layer on and off, and if we have a sign that's missing. If it was captured during this, um, April, uh, drive-through. I could go and. You know, hopefully take a, take a look at the picture and say, oh, you know, we, that. You know, that speed limit sign that. Was, was, you know, either hit or, uh, removed, you know, I, I can go back and, um, I'll know what sign should have been in that place. So then that'll be a point on, on the map, so we can basically, uh. You know, see. You know, without a, it's basically a sign inventory for the whole town. So, um. Very neat, you know, cool new tool. What this, you know, just to kind of show you down the bottom here, on, on the table, that's sort of nestled in. Um, street segments sort of alphabetically, uh, what this will do though is as you zoom in. On these streets, whatever's. Zoomed in is what streets will pop up. So it, it's, it's pretty neat in that sense too. You know, just another, another tool to use, and I'm still learning, you know, to. I guess get the most out of, uh, this tool.
Sounds good, Rich.
Great, um. Thank you, and then I just, just on the right here. There's a, a roadway repairs by year, and this will, I, I gave Beta five years of data, so, um, it'll just keep updating, you know, year by year. So let me see if I, I may need to. Do a new share again back on to. Well, I have no more, I have more graphics, basically, the, the last thing I wanted to talk about was the Route ninety-seven, since I was just on Topsail Road. Um, the, the DOT award, uh, you know, letter that we received late July. Let me just see if I can. Get out of this. I'm still having technical difficulties there, so. I sent this, uh, you know, to, to Steve, um. So basically the municipal payment program, it's under the two thousand twenty-one transportation bond bill. We received award that. The DOT will be. Paving. All of ninety-seven, it's from mile marker one point five to mile marker three point, uh, three point seven. So. Where I am with that is. Why had an initial. Um, basically webinar. Last, um. Last week. To discuss timeline and, you know, where, where that project is in, in their queue. Surprisingly, they are saying that these awards for FY twenty-three, they're, they, they would like to accomplish these projects by the end of FY twenty-three. So obviously that, that would be by end of June. This year. I have what they call a scoping meeting with them actually tomorrow. And that's just basically an, another overview, I had to provide answers on a questionnaire that they, they, they gave us. Um, more or less asking what we, what I think this project should be. And we're gonna have that scoping meeting tomorrow to discuss my thoughts and, you know, what, what. We would like to see. And then we would move for, forward from there, um. Unfortunately, I did have a graphic that had that, uh. Let me someone try to. Alright, I can do this now. Are you looking at my? My, um.
Original slideshow, yes.
Okay. So, here it is, so this was what they provided me. And. Obviously, the green arrow is where we are currently, um. So it, you know, it's still gonna take a little bit of time, but I. I am. Pleasantly surprised of, I guess, the, the aggressive schedule. That, that they have to, to accomplish this work, so. Um, you know, as I mentioned, you know, the next blue dot is tomorrow. So we can, you know, I, I'm hoping move this project along, I think it's a pretty straightforward project, um. I'm anticipating, um, milling the, the entire roadway. Uh, paving the entire roadway, there's only. I think there's only two crosswalks that cross. Topsail Road that don't currently have. ADA ramps. So, you know, it's not a, in my opinion, not a heavy lift for the DOT to, to do this project. You know, there, there's really not much design to it, I don't think, so I will be able to, um. Keep providing Steve updates on, you know, how, how this is moving along, but. Again, very happy that they are considering. You know, getting it done within this fiscal year.
So, so Rich, just a question, clarifying question, are you saying that Mass DOT is gonna pay for this whole thing?
Correct, a hundred percent, we don't even manage the contractors, they're all DOT state, DOT state contractors. I more or less assist the DOT as a town liaison. And, you know, they provide a project manager for, for the project, um, so, yeah, Peter, that, that's correct, a hundred percent. I pulled this slide that you're looking at. Out of, of their presentation. I can give that to Steve as well. That. Gets, you know, I guess that, that answers that question as well, as far as that it's a, um. Hundred percent state funded, there, there is no talent match.
That's a wow.
It is, it, I mean, it, yeah, it's, um, I think it's a big deal, it, it, that, that's. The longest road we have in town and for that to be, um, paid for, not out of taxpayers' funds, I think is, well, out of. Town funds, I think it's, um, pretty. Pretty awesome, I'm, I'm excited for this project, you know, there's a lot of, uh, something I wanted to say, more or less that, you know, there's, there's a lot of really neat things happening here and, um, you know, I'm excited to be, to be part of it.
Thank you. I'd just say that, I mean, I just drove. Ninety-seven. From Cherry Street toward into Topsail, that road's not good.
Right. Yeah, that's why, I mean, it's, it's been, um, you know, identified for some time that it, it, it needs. Uh, you know, basically in. Uh, spring this year, I. Milled out about a thousand feet. Uh, one lane, it's worth, uh, you know, like, very, very bad, uh, pothole areas that have been patched over, you know, over and over through the years. And. That, you know, basically. What was, you know, dropping the bucket of what that road needs, so. Uh, I agree, looking forward to again.
Diane, any comments?
No, it sounds amazing, it's great, thank you.
So it's great that we're getting the new software and, uh. We can really scientifically decide, uh, what roads and what the maintenance schedule, and this helps us in the budgeting as well going forward.
Diane, once that's done, you won't be bouncing off your scooter.
No, it's gonna be a nice smooth ride for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll have a, start putting up the, uh, speed signs, because I'm sure that's gonna happen.
Yeah, speed is a problem.
Alright, thank you, Rich, Michelle, on to the next slide then, please. Alright, so, uh, looking for volunteers from three of us. Who can, uh, sign up for the, uh, attendance at the, uh, Children's Business Festival on the twenty-fourth of September?
I really don't think I'm gonna be here.
Alright. I can do it, Diane, you interested as well?
I would love to be there, I just don't know for sure, I don't want to, I don't want to take on anything else and then I have to give it up.
Then I'll, uh, take this one on.
Oh, you're gonna love it.
Alright.
I moved that Wyndham Select Board nominee Gary Cheeseman to attend the Hamilton Wyndham Children's Business Festival on September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two.
Peter seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter.
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I moved at the Wyndham Select Board Close, the special town meeting ward on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Peter seconds.
Any, uh, comments? If not, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So, uh, we, uh, this was the, uh. Late amendment to the, uh, agenda here. Uh, we only heard from, it was at one PM, Steve, this afternoon. That the DOT came in with a meeting on their proposed stack of slides to present at a public hearing. On Thursday, September eighth, twenty-twenty-two at six thirty PM, so, uh. There'll be more information posted, but, uh, for the public, if you're at all interested in the traffic or the, uh. The roadway right-ofways or the, uh, views, or whatever with one A in the center part of town, this is your one chance. To really get in and let DOT hear your opinion. So Steve, you want to add anything on the, uh, on the background on, from the meeting?
Yeah, it's really, uh, like you said, one, about one o'clock, we thought we were walking into a meeting for, um, you know, basically, uh. A Q and A for, you know, the staff level to kind of get an idea, but it was, uh, reviewing of their deck for this, uh, September eighth. Uh, public hearing. It is, um, it's a requirement for Mass DOT, the public hearing. Uh, it does not preclude them and they have offered to participate in further public meetings. Uh, if there's any follow-up questions, but this is to fulfill, um. Their, uh, legal obligation to hold a public hearing, the information is under more info, if you look, look for the link. I know it's a long link, but if you want to, um, if you Google. Just, uh, Wyndham Route one A, uh, DOT, it comes, it's the first link, or feel free to email the office or call, I can forward you the link. And we are gonna be pushing this out to all our social media accounts, it will be on the website, it will be likely on, um. On the signboard in front of the fire station. And, you know, if any folks are members of other Wyndham, uh, interest groups, feel free to share. Uh, our social media links so they can have a direct link to all the information, uh, there's a nice flyer. That we'll be putting out, you'll see in the next, next day or two, things will start coming out with all the information.
So Steve, would. I wouldn't be understating things if I said. Their plan is gonna really. Change. The center of town.
Yeah, I don't think that would be an understatement, it seems like a pretty large project, they did, they did assure us that no. You know, no, uh, stone walls will be, uh, affected or the. You know, the, the fence out front here. Um, there's the, the town commons of the original town. Meeting grounds. But, yeah, I mean, it's.
They're gonna put a light?
A lot of, a lot of striping, a lot of lights, a lot of, you know, traffic flow changes, things like that, so, and they go into all that in the meeting.
So, yeah, I believe Steve, uh. The, uh. The overhead map of Plan Four A is available at Town Hall. Someplace. We've received it from, uh.
We have not received it, oh, it, it may be, it may be available from a prior informational meeting that they held, but, um. Um, well, based on our meeting today, I should be getting those maps, uh, for display, we're gonna set up a, a tab on the town website to kind of house. All the information. And, yeah, that, that will be one of, one of the, uh, attachments that I'll be able to share.
So significant, uh, safety concerns and traffic flow that state has and prior, uh. Select boards, uh. Originally requested this, but it will have, as Peter says, a dramatic, uh. Change of the view in downtown as we add, uh, multiple, uh, traffic lights and stanchions. And, uh, so, uh, just once again, September eighth, six thirty PM, there's your chance to, uh, be. Be heard, and if I remember correctly, Steve, it is not a recorded meeting, it'll only be minutes taken, so that if you want to have a real story, you do need to show up and. Witness the whole Zoom meeting. Diane, comments?
So I'm just reading the link too, and there is, there, if, if you go on the link, there's. There's someone to contact if you have questions or concerns. And, um. It's a lot of information on that link, that's pretty cool, but we, we do need to remember that the town of Wyndham did ask. The state for this.
Yes, right.
Yeah, so, um, and change is not always bad, it's not always good, but it's not always bad, so we gotta have an open mind to get things safer. Lot of traffic there, a lot of accidents, we gotta do something, so.
So a long time coming, I think they said, what, this started in twenty sixteen? And, um. I think they're kind of indicating that we're not quite, uh, at the state level. Have, uh, money committed yet, so. It's a ways to go, this is at the twenty-five percent design phase. Right now. Alright, anything else on this one?
So, so they might. So, so they might actually listen to some comments after they show, I mean, at this hearing.
I think the, um, from what we've heard from previous information meetings that, uh, you know, listen to the comments, but they are quite constrained by DOT standards. So certainly they've listened, uh, in the past about the, uh, the sanctity of, uh, stone walls and the, uh, downtown general view, I think of the, uh, fence around the Civil War monument. But otherwise I think, you know, the, the design is, their design is their Route one A. It's a state road.
Interesting.
Alright, then on to item H, please, Michelle. Alright, so, uh, next select board meeting is shifted to Wednesday, the seventh, as Monday is Labor Day and Tuesday is Election Day. And then, uh, the second, uh, plan meeting in September is on the twentieth, back to the regular Tuesday. So as we passed, uh, that new, uh, policy, uh, at the last meeting on the preparation cycle for, uh, select board meetings, if, uh, any of the three of us, you know, want particular agenda items, forward those into, uh, Steve, uh, I think it's Monday night. And we'll, uh, discuss them, uh, between myself and Steve on, uh, Tuesday on their prep day.
And, uh, just to add real quick, well, everyone has their calendars out, uh, Monday, September twenty sixth is, um, going to be a joint select board finance committee meeting to discuss the warrant articles at the October first, that following Saturday, special town meeting.
I think that's Rosanna.
Tuesday.
Well, we, we picked that only because Monday is the usually warrant day, but, uh,
Yeah, I know.
While we talk to FinCom and see if everyone can make Tuesday then.
Will do.
Alright. See where we can get the crowd together. Alright, so, uh, couple of briefings from, uh, Gordon College, remember on the seventh, and that's eight AM in the morning. The, uh, Route one A briefing is on the eighth at six thirty PM. And, uh, I've got the, uh, Children's Business Fair. Hope everyone shows up at the, at the Wyndham Museum for that on the twenty fourth of September. Anything else, Steve?
That is all I have for you this evening.
I'm sorry. It was the, what day was the Gordon College? The sixth?
The seventh.
The seventh at what time?
At eight AM.
That's just, um, that's a chair.
Okay.
And department heads meeting. So you can, it will, any board or committee can appoint, can, can, uh, can elected, designate to go there, but what we're doing is trying to get an, an initial information out without, um, getting into open meeting. Block.
Got it.
Makes sense.
Quorum issues and then let each chair or, uh, designate from, uh, each committee decide how they want to, uh, um, kind of get the information out to their, their boarding committee, whether they want to invite Pulte Holmes in, or whether they want to have a joint meeting with, with another. We kind of let them, um, kind of chart their course on, get the information out.
I anticipate it won't go much further, if any, beyond what the three of us individually received. Uh, what, last week, was it?
No, it, that, that's all they plan on presenting is essentially what the three of, uh, the, the three select board members have, were, were presented, uh, last week or the, with the week before. And, um, what they're really looking at is just initial kind of knee jerk reactions, concerns coming out of, um, you know, the various stakeholders and departments. So they can start to, uh, work to address them as they move through the process.
That's a great idea. That's a good, a good way to get everyone together.
Very well then, what the, uh, wrap it up, schools back in next week. So, please, uh, drive safely, especially around the school buildings. And, uh, are we ready for motion?
Yeah, with nothing, uh, left to further discuss, I move that we adjourn the August twenty third, twenty twenty two, select board meeting at eight oh six PM.
Second.
Anything else? Vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Thank you very much. And thank you. Got everything okay? Catherine Tinsley?
Yes, thank you, Gary.
Okay, thank you. And thanks to, uh, Michelle and, uh, Steve and the rest of the town staff that, uh, got this together for us. Alright. See you in a little while.
Thank you.